Monday, February 14th at 1:04. Counselors, you have the agenda before you. And we'll go ahead and just to present our, uh, notification or, uh, for the record, we'll call the roles. Uh, I was talking about ladies. Counselor Woods. Counselor Smithman. Counselor Abbott.
Present.
Counselor Moore.
Present.
And Counselor Clark.
Present.
Uh, President. Sorry, I don't have my microphone on. I apologize. So, we've adopted, and I would like for common consent if we can adopt the agenda. We do have the minutes of the meeting of February 3rd, and hopefully you had an opportunity to read them. Counselor Smithman, can I have a, um, motion to approve the?
Yeah, I move for approval.
Of the minutes. Second in favor, on favor.
On.
I think you. So, those minutes of February 3rd are approved. Uh, as far as our new business, today, we are happy to, uh, have back with us Primcard Consulting and Dr. Kareem Creighton and Mr. Doug Turner. And, uh, so far, we have gone through, and we have another opportunity today to review our draft of the registering map for the city of Birmingham. And so, Dr. Creighton, if you would like to give us a report of actions so far, and maybe a summary of what we've done up to this point?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me? Uh, thank you, Madam President.
Can you speak louder, please?
I can't hear you.
Okay, let me try again. Light scissors. Can you hear me? Testing. No?
A little better, but not much. I'm right behind you.
Okay. Okay. Ah, just closer. Got it. Is this okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Madam President. Um, and thank you, members of the council. Um, it's my pleasure to be back with you along with Doug Turner to take us through this stage of the process. I want to thank all of you, uh, for the time you all spent with each of us, uh, over the last few weeks. Uh, most recently, of course, uh, we went through after our last meeting where we showed you the first recommendation, which was supported by, um, the guidelines that you all accepted at the outset of this process and the first round of individual meetings. We presented, um, a recommendation that, uh, started another process of individual meetings, which we had on the 9th and 10th of February. And in the midst of that, we talked through possible changes. And of course, you all had conversations with each other to consider, uh, possible ways in which the map might be further revised. The result of that is what, uh, what we want to show you, uh, just now. What, um, I wanted to just remind everyone of, of course, is this continues a process. Um, this is our draft, which tries to incorporate all things that were agreed to, uh, during this, uh, period of, uh, February 9th and 10th, the further revisions. What we'll do is, uh, I'll turn it over to Doug Turner, who's been working, of course, with the maps, and we'll, uh, go through district by district. It'll be hopefully shorter this time, since you know what, uh, you saw last time. And then I'll circle back with some global comments, if that's all right?
Thank you, that'll be fine. Thank you.
Okay. So, Doug, I'll turn it over to you, if that's all right? And we'll start district by district.
Take this down for a second. Um, and, and, would you prefer that I hit only the changes from the previous one to expedite, or do you want to go through?
Can we just, if it's your, if it's, uh, appropriate for you, Madam President, I think maybe sticking to the changes that were incorporated, and to the extent that we want to go through and look.
Yes, that's fine with me. Thank you.
The changes would be good, Doug.
Okay, great. Um, so, the, 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 the changes, um, that, that were made, and, um, pardon me, let me get this, um, and you don't happen to have a sheet with the name of the street?
Yes. In fact, while I'm panning the sheet to Doug, I'll just note that, um, you all saw a document last week, I believe, that summarizes, um, the proposed revisions that were up for consideration in the conversations that were had, um, with me and Doug, and also among you all. There were thirteen.
Yes. As Doug prepares that, counselors, you do have in your packet, I believe there were thirteen some odd, uh, proposed changes, and we have those listed for you in the packet as they were presented after our one-on-ones with the consultant. And so, what we'll be doing in this particular, uh, portion of the meeting is to, Doug will review us of those changes, and then I'll come back to each counselor and give you an opportunity to respond, uh, by district after he goes through each of the changes.
So, um, the list of thirteen changes includes three that were, uh, agreed to by mutual consent, and so those were incorporated into the map. The others, um, we can talk about, just sort of their current disposition. Um, so I'll ask Doug to kind of talk about those changes in detail on the graphics, and then I'll give some global comments about what it leaves us with overall with the map that's been produced.
Thank you.
Sorry, I, um, I'm looking for that particular street. So, the, the changes that, uh, were incorporated here, uh, do I need the mic?
Yes, definitely.
Button. Here we go. Better?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I want to make, I want to make sure that I can both see it on my screen and you can see it on this screen, so, um, but I do have a mouse this time, so you will all be glad to not see me. Um, so, the, um, many of these, uh, revolve around, um, District 1, and, and let's take those first. Um, and the, um, and so, stating that the Roebuck neighborhood is geographically very large, um, and that, um, Counselor Woods, um, requested, and, and, uh, we were able to accommodate, uh, the area that you see, sorry, the area that you would see here, um, coming back into District 1, which, um, consists of only a couple of, um, census blocks there. Um, this is, uh, the, uh, around the, sorry, the Roebuck Golf Course. What, one thing that we had, that, that throughout this process, we've tried very hard and been successful doing, is, um, since we had elections only a few months ago, is to not place a member either of the council or Board of Education, um, outside of their district, right? I mean, that, so, there, this is the Board of Education member for District 2, uh, in, in Roebuck. Oh, I'm sorry, it's very sensitive to that. So, what, it, it, it required somewhat reaching down, um, to, to capture those two, but again, successfully done. Contiguity is very important, um, in, in all of this, and, and not just in this one particular, um, aspect, but in all every district, in contiguity. That's achieved here, um, by having actually two different census blocks, um, that allow the, um, the member to remain within District 2 while accommodating the, um, accommodating the entrance of the, of the club, um, yes, the Roebuck Music Golf Course, um, into that, and, and an adjacent, and an adjacent, um, uh, census block. That was one change, um, fairly simple change. The next change occurred with, with, I'm sorry, the next change, it's hard to look at the map and speak into the mic. The next change occurred with, um, Valley, the Valley Crest Road, which, um, pardon me, I'm searching for it a moment. Is? Northwest? Okay, sorry. My chief. Apologies.
Yeah, go all the way till you're a border on the left.
More left?
Left, left, left.
This way?
Well, left on the screen.
There we go. There we go. So, this, this area, which consisted, uh, which, which was otherwise already contiguous to the previous District 1, uh, or modified District 1, um, had been placed into District 4. Um, this, this was, uh, three, I believe, actually, three blocks with, with population, uh, to take in Valley Crest, um, and then one, I can get over there, such on the highway, uh, which had no population. So, four total block movements there. Again, not a great deal of people to accomplish those two things. Um, and the, um, the next thing on that is, uh, should I, Doc Creighton, go ahead and finish with 1, is that, would that be the best in the change that then was required by population? Okay. So, I'm going to zoom out for that. The, um, so, while those changes only picked up a few blocks, this, this really shows, this will really demonstrate, this process demonstrates how some blocks have literally zero people and some have hundreds in them. Um, so, making that change, uh, placed that district, um, slightly above 105 percent. So, there were, there was a, a, a bit of, um, because of earlier changes, uh, District 1 was hoping to gain some population, um, and therefore, part of the Liberty Highlands neighborhood had been allocated to, to District 1, um, for, for both the population reason to, to get it under the, the maximum, but also, um, for contiguity with District 2 being able to, and I'm sorry if this is difficult to explain, with District 2 being able to get to a substantial center of population down here in Overton, um, that has been in District 2 and was kept there in both plans. It, it appeared initially that there were three points where you could achieve contiguity. Um, as we looked closer at it, and this is where this gets really fun sometimes, you can actually see that this point, if you're looking at, at, even a fairly large printed map appears to have a place where it touches, this touches the city of Birmingham, but that in fact is not a point of contiguity. So, we, to be doubly sure of the contiguity of, of 2 with the southern neighborhood, um, there, it, this also helped in that way. And, and the, um, yeah, I'll back out to get it.
And just to, um, put a finer point on that, uh, issue of contiguity, they're maintaining contiguity throughout this process. The only question was whether it would help the map and our defense of the map to have multiple points of contiguity. So, this change puts any question about whether there's one or more to doubt, there are multiple ones now, as it was in the map that we began with, that was out of balance that we started with. So, we're, again, in a better position defending the map now on basis of contiguity, because District 2 is clearly multiple ways it reaches between the Overton area in the south and the area where the incumbent, uh, Counselor Williams lives up north.
Correct. There, there, there appear to be, appeared to be three. This, this one was unchanged. This is, this is the linkage of the, of the Roebuck Springs neighborhood with the, the southern area. So, but with also with, again, required by population shifts because of the other changes made in 1, but, um, very clearly, I mean, rather than having the tiny block-to-block connection, you, you have the substantial, and that's, that also follows the, the lines, I think, of the current council in the way that, um, that it's, um, that that connectivity's made. Lastly, and I was in, any questions about those three as we go?
Does that conclude everything for District 1?
Um, that's correct. So, there's one additional approved change.
Yes.
That involved Districts 4 and 5, but those that Doug just described involve all of the changes that would affect District 1 that have been approved.
That's correct. So.
So, the last one?
The la, yes, the last one was, um, the Northeast Lake neighborhood. Um, this is where, um, Counselor Moore asked that, that, um, described, I think this is Fourth Avenue, as a more logical breakpoint. This, this was a split, uh, and, and that Fourth Avenue was a more logical breakpoint, so brought that in, um, and also took in, uh, Lynn Park, the Lynn Park that is, that is in Northeast Lake, not other Lynn Park. Those are the, the, the four changes that were approved and made here. Those are the four changes that, that were approved and made here to the, um, to the map prior, uh, versus the, um, previous one that was seen.
So, Madam President, if it's your pleasure, we can also talk about the remaining items, either that were tabled or not agreed to explicitly?
Yes.
Okay.
All I knew to that.
So, aside from the ones, and again, on this list, you'll see a color code of distinct, uh, changes. The orange ones represent items that were tabled by mutual agreement, that is to not be, uh, incorporated, and then the red ones were, were one, uh, member wanted the change, and either the other explicitly said they didn't want it, or that, uh, there may have been just a lack of consent. So, I'll just talk briefly about each of those, and, uh, if you all would like to go farther in depth, just let me know. Uh, the first one involves, um, CD 4's proposal to take in, um, Hayes School area in East Avondale. Um, I think it's fair to say that after further discussion, see, uh, the counselors from CD 4 and CD 5 agreed not to move forward with that. I think the understanding was whatever would happen, that the school should travel with the, uh, rest of the community, so that's where that was, uh, left. Similarly so in Kilo Strings, um, CD 1 and 4 had a conversation and agreed to, uh, leave the recommended configuration in place. Um, and, let's see, there were a few blocks around, going farther to the, uh, area around CD 3 and 2, very close to where Counselor Williams lives. There was a, a conversation, or at least a proposal, to consider, um, CD 2 moving a little farther west. Uh, I think, uh, CD 2, Counselor Williams withdrew that proposal, so that was left on the table. Um, there was, of course, the, a lot of conversation about Druid Hills. I'm just going to keep going down the list. Um, that was a proposal to, uh, switch the disposition of Druid Hills, which is in the proposal in CD 9, and Smithfield in the proposal located in CD 5. Um, that was with a carve-out, I should say, with the exception of a carve-out for Parker High School, um, that was declined. There was not an agreement, so that was not included. Um, I misspoke, but CD 5, uh, had proposed, I mentioned just now, the connection between Tom Brown Village, uh, moving from CD 5 to CD 4. Um, that was not finalized, so that was not included. Similarly so for CD 5's proposal about what I call the boot. Sorry, my people are originally from Louisiana. Uh, the lower part of East Avondale, um, that, I think, was still kind of left in the parking lot. There was not an agreement that we, um, saw from the affected members. Um, and there was a question as to, you know, where that boot would go, but that was, uh, something that's on the table.
Dr. Creighton, may I?
Pardon?
May I show, while you're on that topic, this is, this is what I, I want to show that. There's been some, you have a lot of discussion and confusion around this, and, and this is where we're limited by census blocks, okay? I'm, I'm going to, right now, this is, show you all that. This is one census block that I just, I mean, it, it, so, if whoever takes this census block, as odd as it is, this is what runs into the Forest Park South Avondale neighborhood, uh, this, it, this one block is, is actually in three neighborhoods, okay? But we can't split a block. And if you, if whoever takes this block, um, it must, i- i- either coming from, again, to connectivity here, it's, uh, contiguity, either this would be an island, um, and either coming from, I believe that's District 3, or whoever has this block would, would need to, to take those. Those are the only two districts that, that could take it. Likewise, um, this block, that's a single block that runs from Crestwood South, over the mountain and into well in, actually, well into the, the Forest Park South Avondale neighborhood. Um, again, same thing here. I mean, the size of that block versus, I mean, we'll, we'll say, uh, it was, 9,500 blocks within the entire city. If you look at that versus, that's a block. I mean, and these are not blocks we created, they came from the Census Department. I mean, so, that, that little bit can be assigned, right? But the three that I just showed you, which happened to, to be right there, and there, there are some other large and odd shape going throughout the city. We're not going to sit here all afternoon to show them, all of them. But I know there's been a lot of discussion, because particularly in that one that comes down to what we're calling the boot in East Avondale, or, or whatever you should call it, um, it, it kind of, it brings a lot of area and, and runs into, to three neighborhoods. So, um, that's, that's the reason there. It's not that, that we haven't heard that, we cannot disentangle a single block. So, sorry, I'm, thank you.
No, I, I thank you for that, um, explanation. I wanted to mention also, which isn't quite officially captured in here because the materials, uh, went out in the midst of conversations over the course of the weekend. I know there was some conversation about a part of Forest Park, uh, moving from CD 3, which is in the recommendation, uh, to CD 5. Um, that hasn't gotten any confirmation, so that, again, got left out of the final proposal, but in some ways that could be tied to some degree. I think that was tied in part to the conversation of, uh, the boot in East Avondale that we were just describing. We can be quick with the last couple. Um, the, uh, tie between the next two proposals for CD 6 and CD 7, West Men, West End Manor, apologies for the misspelling, uh, going out of, uh, CD 6, paddling going into CD 6, uh, the counselors agreed to table that, and so that was not pursued further. And then finally, um, a proposal that was not consented to was involve CD 3, uh, taking, um, back part of, um, Five Point and moving out part of Glen Iris, um, that was not agreed to. And a proposal, Glen Iris is consolidated in CD 3, as was, uh, Forest Park, but that, those are the last two, um, issues. And again, those were not included in the, uh, in the revised recommendations after we got the, uh, input from counselors. So, Madam President, that's sort of the general summary. I'll just say two last things. We think, again, um, this accomplishes the, uh, goals that we set forth in the guidelines. We, um, set forth, uh, commitment, if we could, to try to bring, uh, neighborhoods together. That continues to be the case. Um, even with the, uh, change in CD 1, where, uh, Roebuck was already split, uh, the changes for CD 1 allowed for, uh, the consolidation of Liberty Highlands. And, um, furthermore, beyond that, we talked about respecting the, uh, recent decision of the city and voting for you all in, uh, November, so as not to displace, uh, more people than we needed to, and people could have continuity of representation. Uh, you see in your packet, there's a, a chart, I just wanted to call your attention to it, um, that tracks, you'll see it here, has some shades and a little bit of a checkerboard, that tracks the number of people that remain in each district following the revision. And actually, two stages. You see the first proposal and then the revised proposal, which is where we are now. Um, the thing to just focus on is that bottom piece. I mean, you can look at everything, but just for this purpose, I just wanted to call your attention to the bottom piece and the shaded boxes. The shaded boxes refer to the percentage of people in each district that remain, at the beginning of the process, that remain in the district as of today, given the, uh, proposal. If the proposal is, uh, moves forward, this would be the number, the percentage of people who are there. Um, between the first recommendation we offered in the revision, uh, the number, the average, uh, number of people in each district that has gone up, it's, the citywide number has gone up from like, I think the number was like 85, the low 85.4 percent, I think it was, to now 85.9 percent, which is to say, only 14 percent of the people in the entire city are now, or at least according to this proposal, they would be moved to a new district than before. You'll notice that, uh, there're.
That percentage again? I'm sorry, was you?
Sorry, yes, ma'am. Um, the average, um, across the city is 85.9 percent. So, only about 14 percent of the population as a whole is moved. It's not even across all the, um, districts, and that isn't especially surprising. You'll see, right, districts in the corners of the city where there can't be a lot of population movement generally will have higher percentages. Um, District 5 has the lowest percentage relative to others, but it's still three out of every four people, 75.3 percent. And that number increased, um, between the first recommendation and now the revised proposal. And again, as we've talked about, um, District 5 is right in the middle. It's the only district that touches both districts that have grown and needed pop, uh, sorry, needed to lose population, and districts in the, uh, west that have lost population. So, that is not all that surprising if there was a lot of change. So, um, ultimately, again, we think overall balancing population, keeping contiguous and compact districts, and also, of course, making sure that we're in compliance with, uh, federal and state law. We think this, uh, map pretty closely approximates all of those considerations, plus the input that we've gotten, to the extent that we can balance them in a single map. So, that is our recommendation. I'm happy to take your questions.
All right, well, thank you very much. We, uh, do appreciate the process that we've gone through, and, um, the, I want to thank the counselors that have had to work and, um, talk with each other about, uh, these proposed changes and how they affect their district. What I'd like to do at this time is just I'll go by district and, um, ask for comments from each counselor as these proposed changes affect you, and, uh, the reiteration of what we have in front of us is the draft that we would be, uh, considering. So, I'll start with you, Counselor Woods. In District 1, any comments or questions you have?
Uh, no, we were able to kind of coordinate, uh, myself and Counselor Moore had several items, um, and we did move Smith Middle into 4, but, uh, Counselor Moore has already extended an invitation and said I could come by anytime, so, thank you.
That's so kind. Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselor Williams, District 2?
Yeah, uh, Doug, can you zoom in to where, uh, the school board member Williams is?
On my map.
Yes.
And can I go over how that changed?
So.
Yep.
Let me place my green.
From, from last iteration, I mean, how it changed?
I, I understand.
It needs to be on green.
Oh.
Action.
Okay.
Yeah.
Light didn't change. Um, essentially, it.
Did that go further north?
No.
Oh, okay. I didn't go.
It, it, it.
Counselor. I mean, yeah, there were, there were, so, this, this is the block.
Gotcha. Okay.
That was, that due to, just to give, um, a wider earth, if you will, to, you know, having, uh, the connectivity and contiguity for the school board members' purpose. Um, it was needed to allocate to 1 in order to reach.
I got it. So, so that was due to the blocks, is the reason? I got it. That's, okay.
So, I actually would do it a five or six ways, to see how few people could be affected out.
I gotcha. Okay. That's cool. I just wanted to see if that shaping was because of the blocks.
Uh, hey.
All right.
All right. Thank you. And I believe Counselor, I'm going to skip to Counselor Moore, because did that, have some conversation with you?
I'm going to run out real fast.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. By you then, Counselor Williams. All right, Mrs. Abbott, District 3?
Thank you. Well, I had told, I was approached by two council members who wanted to make a few little changes, and one was, um, Counselor Williams, and one was Counselor O'Quinn, and I told them both that I would be willing to work with them. What I'm hearing now is that maybe the census blocks that contain the area that they need, well, it'll, it sounds like it won't work for District 2 because the census block is so big. Is that true? Are there so many people in that census block that it would?
So, there, there are two, two issues here. There are a lot of people in the census block, uh, and I'll call the other back up in just a moment. It, 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 it probably has more to do with the oddity of the shape of, of, of that census block, and then the two just to the south of it. We, we did try, and, and this is the only place, I think, we didn't accomplish this, where for each of the counselors to. There are a lot of people in the census block, and I'll call the other back up in just a moment. It, it, it probably has more to do with the oddity of the shape of, of that census block and then the two just to the south of it. We, we did try, and, and this is the only place I think we didn't accomplish this, where for each of the councilors to have the entirety of their own neighborhood. And this, again, the oddity of the size and the, and I can do it better if you'll allow me just a second to log back into the other program just to, to show you, but it's, let me just do that. Sorry. If there's a separate question while this loads, again, I apologize, which it's dependent on internet speed. Okay. So-
Now, that's not what councillor Williams wanted. His is further down on the screen.
Well, so there's that, runs, both of those two are in Crestwood South, but run quite deep into Forest Park. That particular block, go back over here, actually runs quite close to the Board of, not, doesn't take in, but runs quite close to the Board of Education members' district there. One sec. I'm so sorry. So while this particular block, to which I'm pointing now, runs to, is in Crestwood South, it also runs deep into the Forest Park neighborhood, and the, the same with this one. So the, the, the one above it in the boot is a stranger situation, but those are both split between the Forest Park South Avondale neighborhood as well as the, as well as Crestwood South. So we did to, yes, and that, that shows the two there, how deep they would run into. All right, let me, apologies. So councillor, so this would run, essentially that block runs to Essex Road in Forest Park. So there, I mean, the population center of that block would, would be, you know, well in, into, well, I'm sorry, well into, well into Forest Park. It, it was a preservation of, of that neighborhood as well as the fact that, that, that this block, I'm sorry. Because of the oddity of the one above it, really dictated that we could not push to all the way over to the, the Crestwood South border. Those two, checking numbers, if, if you wish, I don't think that there is a numeric problem. I would need to check myself, but I don't think there's a numeric problem if, if you wish to have those two moved to, to District 2. The bo, I'm sorry, the bottom two, if, if that's an agreed upon change, I don't think there's a numeric problem there. The one above, again, the boot gets much more complicated, so.
Creighton, I think he had something to add.
Right, just a, a comment. I mean, Doug's assessment of the numbers is right. I'd understood, and I may be incorrect, but my notes had that District 2 had withdrawn the proposal, so that's why we didn't pursue it further. Am I correct about that, or?
I never withdrew it, but it's up to value because I don't really care whatever makes the most people happy. I'm-
Yeah, well, I didn't hear about the withdrawing part, so-
I didn't, no, I didn't.
I thought that, and I knew that you were trying to get one street.
Yeah. No, well, I don't, I don't want to capitalize on your whole district. I was just trying to make the lines even, but if that's what the, if that's because of the census block, then I'm not worried. I mean, whatever, I don't.
Okay. So, and then the other one was Dr. O'Quinn had asked about the boot, and we had agreed that, he also asked about the part of Avondale that is across 5th, which is already, well, it's in his district right now. So I don't have a problem with that if the numbers are equal.
How does that work?
So I just want to remind all the councilors. So one of the things that we were very careful to do was not to make any changes unless we actually heard consent. That was important because we thought we wanted to make sure that nobody got any surprises about changes that they thought were not made, that were going to be made. I understand now, and I think that's one of the reasons we reached out to both councillor O'Quinn and councillor Abbott yesterday to hear anything. I updated you to say we didn't hear anything.
Well, yesterday was Sunday, so, you know.
Understood, understood, but I just wanted to-
But I just told him that I would work with him on it, that, you know, if we could swap the numbers, if the numbers of people were equal, you know, that was fine. I mean, I, I don't want anybody to be miserable over, over anything that I've gotten from their districts, because I know how I feel. I mean, it's, the golden rule kind of applies. So those were the two that were discussed with the councillors from, from Districts 2 and 5. And then my inquiry, inquiry was about the, really the heart of my district, which looks like it has a large shark bite taken out of it where Five Point South is. And, and that was a, a big concern to me because I have an affinity and for the heart of my district, and the heart has been ripped out. So I had inquired of councillor Smithelman if she would take back what she already has and I could keep what I already have, but she declined. And I wish she'd change her mind, because I'm just heartbroken over it. I really am. I mean, it's the heart of my district. So those were my, I mean, I don't, I don't covet anybody else's district. I would just like to keep what I have.
Well, let me ask this, and Dr. Creighton, if you would help us with what brought about that particular change and how it affects our guidelines, or how our guidelines affect that.
All right. So council District 3, and we, we talked about it last week when we presented the recommendation. Just like every other district, you know, was in that general zone, not as much as 5, but in the general zone of a lot of population change. One of the big considerations that we, you know, kind of kept throughout all of this was to try where we could to bring communities together. As Mr. Turner mentioned earlier, where we could, every home neighborhood of each council member was brought together, with the exception of councillor Williams, and you now know some of the reasons why, with respect to Crestwood. But Glen Iris was an obvious place where there was an easy connection to make, and so we made it. It also facilitated a move that we were needing to make to consolidate neighborhoods in Forest Park. Now, there's a conversation now that, again, seems to be ongoing about whether that should or shouldn't be split. We consolidated it in accordance with the, the guidelines, but as before councillor Abbott has part, but less of Five Point South, which is actually a rather big neighborhood, and councillor Smithelman has another part. But, you know, like Roebuck, which started the process divided and ends the process now divided, divided differently, that's sort of where this shook out with respect to Five Point South. It couldn't in whole be put in your district councillor Abbott or councillor Smithelman's district, but the difference was councillor Smithelman's district, District 6, needed to gain more population. And so that was in part, plus the upside of having a consolidated Forest Park, was what led to that particular configuration. I recognize, as I've said to those of you all who, whose districts were changed significantly, change is not easy, and I respect it, and you all ultimately have a choice as to whether this recommendation is the way you want to go. It's our best opinion at present that that's sort of the configuration that makes the most sense. As I said yesterday, which was a Sunday, I kind of pursued further some statements that I got from councillor Quinn about a conversation that you all had about the trading of East Avondale, a part of it with part of Forest Park, but that was something that I didn't get a confirmation on, and anytime I don't get confirmation, I hold tight. I take the conservative, small c approach so that it doesn't offend expectations that people had based on what they saw. But that's the reason that the configuration looks the way that it does with council District 3. As I say, I recognize the difficulty of the change, but the population moving requires some level of change. And how it happens, we've given you one recommended approach, and it's, you know, obviously your pleasure to determine as a group whether that's the way you want to go.
Yeah. And, and I sat down with your maps and calculated the numbers of people, and it came within 49 people to be a wash, between putting back in District 6 the part of Glen Iris that's there and putting back the part of District 3 that is Highland, I mean, Five Point South. I mean, it's only from 10th Avenue South.
Is that accurate? I know your numbers, we have, the councillor has a set of numbers. Could you expound on what you feel that number is as far as from the consultant?
I'm going to speak for a minute and ask Doug to kind of size up exactly what the numbers are, but again, the cost of the choice to be made is whether it is appropriate to divide Glen Iris. And again, our guidelines suggest that you should err on the side of putting them together. And as I said, we are, we endeavor to treat every councilmember equally with respect to the one thing that everybody shares in common, you're in the neighborhood. We consolidated the neighborhood where we could, and frankly, even if you didn't live there, it would be a place like other neighborhoods in the jurisdiction where it was possible to bring the neighborhood together that we did. And there was no obvious reason why, as, as far as we saw, that there was a difference in the people who were on the west end of Glen Iris and those on the eastern end. But again, there may be a reason that you all choose to, notwithstanding that, divide it, but that was our recommendation. And, you know, again, the process, in figuring that out, we left to you all as councilors to give us guidance. And I understand your position on the matter, councillor Abbott. I also have a position offered, as you know, from councillor Smithelman, but I can't make that call. I've given you our, we've given you our recommendation based on our best thinking, and it's up to you all to determine how you would like to move forward.
Well, I understand that. Thank you. And it's a moot point, obviously.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. If that's all for District 3, then we'll move to District 4.
All right, cool. Mike may have missed me. I've been gone for a minute. So just wanted to say, yeah, I, I did hate that, you know, I was losing out on, you know, the people of Tom Brown Village, as well as Hayes, Kateley Ray, kind of like, you know, Valerie Abbott. I, I definitely have an affinity for the people that live there, and a lot of great relationships, but I know that they are in good hands with District 5, with Darrell O'Quinn, and he has also offered me the same invitation to still engage the folks over in that area, and so I'm excited about that. I think the, the only, you know, question that I had was, you know, about the Northeast Lake neighborhood, and really just trying to find out, in those census blocks in that, that neighborhood, what were their numbers in that area? I was just curious about, you know, curious about that area, if y'all could share, because looking at, you know, my population within my whole entire district, currently I'm, I'm sitting at 21-561, which I believe is, you know, the, the lowest amount, and I know in District 4, that's 96.7%. And trying to see if it would be possible to err on the side of having more folks in my district, since it seems as though, you know, population is growing towards the east and just trying to see what those numbers were.
So again, I'm going to say some words that Doug will give you the exact numbers, but, because I, you know, since we're doing it for the record, I will tell you the recommendation in, you know, when we had our conversation, I hope you'll be okay with my sharing, you know, the contents, but it was, we looked at Northeast Lake and we said, you know, at the very least, we can start from the position of taking the area up to, in, in District 4, going as far as 4th, 41st Avenue? No, it's 4th.
4th.
Forget it, I don't have the map in front of me. And so we accomplished that with this map. The concern we had was about the balance of population, not just for your district, but overall. You're right about, I think, the overall effect not going beyond the limit of 5% deviation. The concern we had was by going all the way into Northeast Lake and not having a, sort of, let's say, a counter move to add to District 5, the district from which that area would be taken. District 5 would move to about 4.8% deviation down, below the ideal. That's permitted under the rules, but it's very close to the line, and my guidance generally is to try to steer as far back from the line as you possibly can. And in this presentation, all of the districts are roughly in line. There's not like one, I think the most out of line is somewhere in about the 3.5% range. If you all wish to go beyond that, that is certainly something you can do, but I wanted to make certain before we did that, it was clear that everybody was agreed, if one district was significantly out of, let's say, where the norm was with respect to deviation, still legal under our guidelines, but right at the limit, I, that's the cost of doing it. So I wanted to make sure that you understood the cost before doing it and that there was nobody surprised by one district being way out of alignment and others pretty much tightly connected to it. I think I've said enough to give you a chance to hear from Doug, maybe, about the numbers in that district. But the general scope of what you said, I tend to agree with. I don't know exactly the numbers, but one of the costs of that numbers, while you're right about your district, it would put District 5 significantly, not illegally, at least under our guidelines, out of alignment in terms of the deviation. We said, you know, the max of 5, this would be kind of close to it.
Got you.
Thank you. I know, Doug, are you still trying to search for those numbers?
Yeah, I, I apologize.
That's okay.
Calculating things on the fly is sometimes dangerous.
We can promise to get you the numbers.
Okay.
That'll be okay?
And, yeah. That's right.
All right. So I'll just interject that, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you know, all of our shared boundaries are, I'm still open for discussion, you know? If North Avondale needs to come back into the conversation, you know, relative to Northeast Lake, whatever we need to do, I'm still open for discussion.
Thank you. Now we'll go on to District 5.
Are we waiting on Doug?
Well, he's trying to get those numbers, and I believe we've agreed that he'll provide those to councillor Moore.
Yeah, he, he said the bottom outside.
Yes. Go ahead, councillor O'Quinn.
Okay. Trying to figure out where to start. Okay, let me just start where we just were. So, again, councillor Moore, if you need to pick up additional population, you know, the East Lake area, whatever we need to do to put you, I agree with you that, you know, we should probably err on the side of having you over 100%. So whatever you and I need to agree to, to, to make that happen, I'm, I'm willing to have that conversation. Relative to the East Avondale, Forest Park area, we've discussed that, the exchanging the boot portion of East Avondale for the South Avondale part of Forest Park South Avondale, and I think councillor Abbott and I are, you know, still in discussion about that, but willing to, you know, have that conversation. willing to, you know, have that conversation. Perhaps the only other thing I would mention is that Counselor Tate and I were, have been able to have some dialogue. And because of perhaps the, you know, the interstate being involved in part of Druid Hills, there's some unpopulated census blocks that involve the expressway and 2059 interchange that if I interpret correctly, she's allowed, she's willing to have conversation about allowing those to come back into District Five. So namely, census blocks 40009, 4010, 4011, and 4012. Again, these are unpopulated census blocks, but they include portions of the 2059 Red Mountain Expressway interchange. other than that, I mean, so I guess the only other thing is that I would add is, is there's obviously a lot of ongoing discussion. So I would hope that we would not, you know, take any action to like move the current map forward until we've reached some, you know, clarity on these different pieces.
At this point, and we'll continue with, I'll just, let's continue with going through each district, and then we'll come back to that. Thank you, Dr. O'Quinn. The next one, I believe, is Six. Counselor Protem.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. According to the guidelines, we have to have whole neighborhoods. As of right now, because I gained all of Weston Manor, taking it from District Seven, I gave up Powderly to give it to District Seven. That makes those two neighborhoods whole. I gave up all of Grandma, and I love Miss Body, so I'm gonna miss Miss Body, and I gave it to District Eight, Smithfield. I gave all of Smithfield to District Five, just to base off of everything he has lost. My district needed people. Almost everybody on the west side needed people. I didn't need as many people as maybe District Eight or Nine, but I needed people. In the spirit of complete neighborhoods, that had to happen for Glen Iris. Five Point South is huge, so we couldn't make it a whole neighborhood. That is why I am not agreeing to it in the concept of whole neighborhoods. And then in fact, I also learned that the divide in Glen Iris, with it going into District Three, will make it more diverse at that. So that is why I'm not changing what is proposed for my district. Madam President and I talked about it, and we're not going to change Weston Manor and Powderly in the spirit of whole neighborhoods. Other than that, I think it's just fine. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Protem. And as you said in talking about the changes in District Six as they affect District Seven, I'm in agreement with how we have talked about what we would do with those two particular neighborhoods. That was the only proposal or anything that varied out of District Seven. And so with us making those agreements, how does that work with the map and with what we proposed?
With respect to your
Yes, the Six and Seven.
Decision, it leaves you all in place with respect to the percentages. You're, you know, both well within the deviation and the deviation that we've set up in the guidelines. And yeah, I'd have no other concerns from my perspective of moving forward with your piece of it.
Thank you. Anything else, Madam Protem?
No.
All right, thank you. District Eight.
Thank you, Madam President. Let's see, Doug can't project anything in my district.
It has.
That's okay.
As I put, I'm sorry, as I plugged back in, it did, it isn't. Oh, my. That's it.
Well, let me just
You want to look at a map?
May I? I think I know what I'm talking about, but it might help to look at a map. What color am I?
We'll get this.
Oh, here I am. Okay. I guess in the spirit of whole neighborhoods, I mean, I'm generally fine, but there's a neighborhood in Central Pratt that when I first glanced at it, I thought was giving me all of Thomas, but it's really breaking up a neighborhood. And it's just, it's very few people. It's a little hamlet called Tuxedo Heights. And logistically, it's separate from the population centers, you know? It's just more separate. It's very much.
So Counselor Clark, is this request, is this a different item than what
I just want to know how they split up a neighborhood.
Okay, so the question's more of that.
It's more methodology, like what was the thinking? Because it's taken a bite out of a neighborhood called Central Pratt, so I'm just curious.
Do we have an answer for that?
Can you see it? Can I show it to you?
Actually.
So you see that? That's taken a bite out of that neighborhood, and it's only 240 people, so, yeah. Something like, in the spirit of whole neighborhoods, why did I get that little piece of a neighborhood?
That's a, yeah, that is a block issue. That is a block issue.
Okay.
Sorry, we're trying to get this back.
But the stuff around it is industrial, so it's not people.
Sometimes when you're talking about, so neighborhoods don't align necessarily with the census blocks that the United States Census offered. And often, and Doug will show you more accurately where this was, there are often choices where, as with the area around District Three and District Two, there was a choice of either over-correcting by taking a census block or under-correcting by taking a census block. And I don't know, again, which side it sits on, but often
Yeah.
What we tried to do where we could was consolidate, but it wouldn't always work out perfectly. And this may be, I suspect, again, there are like 9,000 or so census blocks in this city, I think this is one of those examples.
I would just say, look at it because there's no people around
Okay.
This neighborhood, no people. So I'd be curious to see what the block looks like. I mean, because there's no people for a long time. And the people who are near it, I already have them, I think.
Okay, so that's
It's not a big, big deal, but it's like, it's gonna probably be a big deal to those people.
Okay. But remember our guidelines. I mean, I know change affects us all and, but in that case
Wouldn't affect anybody.
Okay. I do want them to rule though on whether this would be affected by the census block.
Right, they're working.
And I know he's trying to get that up, so we could put that on the parking lot, but that is noted.
Block issue.
And you just want to confirm, you think that, is that a block issue?
I think it is. I just want to be able to, you know, show you exactly what it is, but I think that's right for now. I think if it's okay, you know, this sounds like one of those technical questions that we might need to just talk about separately.
Okay.
But the
Correct.
I'm happy to take you, take your guidance.
Okay.
What I'd like to do so that we don't, we can move forward, if we'll put that on the parking lot, and I believe you've got that particular question, it could be answered for you when we find that information.
It's not a problem for me. I think it'll be a problem for the people to be
Thank you.
And I have to say, this might be one of those many examples where hearing from the public about that might be useful, and I think that's sort of the next
And that's what we're gonna talk about next, yes.
And I know we have one more council member left.
Correct. So let me get through this council, and then we'll talk about, because that input from the public, this is one of those cases where it would be important. If we could go ahead now and look at Nine. Counselor Tate, are you ready? Did you have any questions or comments for the consultants in looking at some of the issues you had with, I know you've had some proposals from Dr. O'Quinn. In what direction? I will have to get Kareem to look at, you know, the feasibility of what's being proposed.
I can take a closer look at it, and I would say this actually may be, assuming there's a point of consent, because again, I start from that position. You all are guiding us. But in terms of this sort of change, it may amount to the kind of technical change if you all agree to it, that might be something that we consider later down the line. If you, even if you have an agreement, this isn't the kind of thing that, if it looks like it sounds like, everything could later be kind of engrossed in the sort of final version of this as you sort of gain more input and information. But I certainly would be happy to, of course, with all of you all, to give a closer look to this particular area and give you our sense of kind of how that looks and how that might affect your district. Happy to do that. I think, you know, this phase, if it affects zero people, would be one of the easier things to work out, but I would like to make sure we stay on path with what, you know, you all have expected to move this thing to the next stage at the appropriate time.
All right. Thank you. Doug, are you ready to address any of those?
Yes, ma'am. This is That is, that's a block in the Thomas neighborhood. I under, I really do. Runs into
Okay.
Well, I'm gonna let it go.
All right.
I didn't know it was mine.
Okay. And we've had something like that, I know. I've had residents to tell me, oh, no, you belong to me. So thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you. I want to thank you all, Dr. Creighton and Doug, with going us through the reiteration of this latest version of the draft. Thank you, councilors, for those of you who have had discussions, working these items out. What I would like to propose to the committee, let's keep in mind, this is a draft. This draft has to go to the clerk, and then we will present it to the residents, as well as allow you all opportunity for more discussion. But this is a working document, but it does need to be filed at this point with the clerk, but with the intent, based on our guidelines, that we will continue with communication, and we're very eager to have the public input as well, not only that from the council, but also with the public input. So I would like to have a motion from the committee if we could get an approval of moving forward this draft so that we can go forward and present it to the clerk, and then we'll have this opportunity to have more discussion and have this available for the public.
I move for approval.
Second. Second question.
Yeah, I'm gonna object because I think there are, you know, significant changes that are yet to be identified, and I, you know, would want what's going to the public to be closer to a final agreement amongst us. I mean, at least the discussions that I'm involved in, you know, involve several neighborhoods. So, you know, I just want to make that known that I wouldn't support moving it forward at this time.
Madam President.
Thanks, ma'am. Yes, Madam Protem.
And I want, I see Julia Latonya Bernard here. So if she could come up and tell us about the deadlines, because we are on a deadline for this. This isn't about this, that, and the third, and Madam President told us the deadlines. So like after a certain point, we have to approve a draft, or we're not gonna be in compliance with the law. This isn't like, okay, this, that, and the third, like we gotta be in compliance with the law. They told us either this council meeting, and we would be stretching it for the next council meeting to approve the draft. So I want her to come up and kind of explain a little bit more why Madam President is asking for this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard.
... The Office of City Attorney. Yes, there is, there is a deadline. The deadline is set by the council, is set by ordinance. There's not a state deadline or statute or anything that you're looking to comply with here. It is in the ordinance that the council adopted when the single-member districts were created. And that deadline to submit the draft was six, within six months of the publication of the census data. So the census data was published August 12th. Six months technically is February 12th. Dr. Creighton and I conferred, and we agreed that in most cases, as you're probably familiar with IRS, if April 15th falls on a Saturday or Sunday, IRS is not open, so they roll the filing date to the next weekday. And that's the same with many, you know, many legal filings, is if the office we've got filed, it's not open on the day it's supposed to be filed, then it rolls to the next business day. So that's why we went forward with today being the day for the committee to discuss it and consider submitting it to the council. When it, I mean, to the clerk, when it gets submitted to the clerk, that triggers another deadline, which is within 10 days, the clerk places a resolution to set a public hearing on the council agenda. So if it goes forward to the clerk today, it could be set, that resolution could go on next Tuesday, you know, a week out on this agenda and be within the 10 days. From there, that triggers a deadline to hold a public hearing. And that public hearing must be no less than 28 nor no more than 42 days from the date the council You know, you could say it's the date that the council actually considers it and passes it. You've got to consider, the mayor has up to 10 days to sign, you know, consider and sign and finalize. So you could have an argument that even 10 days from the date that the council adopts that could trigger the 28 days, you know, given the mayor the time, a time to sign or veto the item, or it to become law within 10 days of passage. And that's up to the mayor, it's up to the council if you want to ask the mayor to expedite his signature on, you know, on the matter, so that it moves forward quicker. But those are generally the deadlines that are triggered, and I know I kind of ran through that quickly, so if there are any questions or need me to clarify.
You have a question, Dr. O'Quinn? Go ahead.
So setting a public hearing wouldn't necessarily involve releasing a draft map to the public?
Setting the public hearing doesn't necessarily, but one thing that has to be done before that hearing is, the map and the ordinance have to be on file with the city clerk for it to be reviewed by the public prior to the hearing. And I would recommend, this has been the practice of the council in recent years, when we've set something, you know, maybe an ordinance or something, not necessarily zoning, but some other ordinances, we've placed those on the website where the public can see and view it. And especially with continuing questions about the pandemic, that may not be a bad idea. So they can be, but the, I think the ordinance and the map need to be substantially in the form that they're going to be adopted before that hearing goes forward. You don't have to publish them, as is required for zoning ordinance, you just have to publish the notice of the public hearing and where the public can access the map and the ordinance. So they don't have to be published, like with the zoning ordinance, you have to publish at some point the text of the ordinance. In this case, they're just on file for the public to access and review. But I think it's best that it's in substantially the form that's going to be considered at the public hearing, before you go forward with that.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Dr. Creighton, did you have a follow-up, or?
Just a comment, I obviously defer to the city attorney's reading of the local ordinances. I would just suggest to you though, in a public process, I think it will be important for the public to know what they're commenting on, because, again, the data, this part of the data is, you all offer perspectives, they will want to offer perspectives. So if not at the same time, very close in time, and I would suggest at the same time, it's useful to have the public be able to access the content of what you all are going to be seeking responsiveness on. And so, obviously, it's your choice about when that happens, I would just encourage it as soon as possible.
Well, I know that the committee, we were committed to launching a website that would have this information available for residents, will also ask for comments, and then we would have the public hearing, and then look at those comments as we entertain the final draft for, as our final redistricting map. Vote is still on the floor, as to, and I think you had another question, go ahead, Dr. O'Quinn.
Yes, yeah, so I'm not trying to be obstructionist here, but I do want the public not to be confused by what's being proposed, and if there's, you know, several items, several areas still, you know, to, yet to be decided, I would just advise, at a minimum, that, you know, we try to make sure that we're, we have some clarity around what we're offering to the public. And, you know, I can stick around today, and we can probably, you know, get some, something nailed down this afternoon on these areas that are up for discussion. So, you know, that's, that's the only point that I'm trying to make, is let's, let's avoid confusing the public with areas that are still being discussed.
I understand that, and I, the areas that are being discussed are being part of a draft map that we would be filing with the clerk, with continued discussion with councilors, and also obtaining the public opinion. Mr. Woods.
Yes, I'm not clear exactly on which areas that are still being under conversation. I know there were some numbers being pulled together and looked at, but if there, I guess if there is some openness to, you know, from councilors to continue discussing certain items, even a 30-minute recess or something may be something that could allow them to speak to the consultants and get some clarity and detail on those numbers, and kind of check both boxes, so.
Thank you. Madam President.
Don't we have to redraw?
But let me ask with this process, with the questions that have been asked so far, I know we have, and we looked at the items that were already outstanding, that we have not, we don't have any agreement on. What would that do with the time involved to look at those questions, or the numbers that we were seeking, and redraw, or look at the map?
I appreciate that, Madam President. There are two kinds of questions, I just want to be clear. There's a question of, at least I heard, maybe one person, and it might have been Council of Moore asked, well, what's the effect if I add more to the map? And then there are questions about whether, what's in the map actually, and I think this may be Council of Clark's question, which might have been answered, I think, whether or not a thing that she thought was out of her district is in the district, and how many people there are. As to things that might involve changes, we, you know, of course, spoke about the need to make certain that everything that we do is something that you see, and that you are very clear about, that we've, you know, drawn on the map, that it reflects your preferences. And to date, I can tell you, of things that we're committed to, this map captures it. There were things that were not quite clear, you know, statements that said, maybe we're talking, maybe not. We didn't change that until we understood both or all of the people involved are connected and agreed to make the change. What I would say with respect to things that would require a change, it would take time, both, I think, to assure that everybody understands the implications of that change, not just for the district, but the entire area. Some of them, you know, obviously, like yours, District 6 and District 7, were purely internal, but obviously, you two were both going to be interested in it. But there are others that have knockoff effects, like the one that involved the movement between two and, excuse me, one, one and four. District one was able, as a result of the changes, to come out of Liberty Highland. So I'm a little concerned about the sort of broad, broad conversations that might have implications of two or three or more districts, and it would take a lot of time, I think, to really get that right. And I want all of you all to be confident that what you see is what's there. Now, to the extent, again, there are ongoing conversations, I tend to agree with the president's view, these are things that can continue, and, you know, the public now has seen, I guess now, the initial map, the recommended map, and this revision, I don't think if, at some point, there's another thing to see that is going to add to any level of confusion, that would be unreasonable, but I think this is probably the best and wisest approach to release a map that we can confidently say we know, now, at least I think with Council of Clark's being okay, or at least understanding what's in that area.
Your chart suggests that it came out of nine and into eight.
I'm sorry?
Your chart, the table, the table suggests that those few hundred people, couple a hundred people came out of District nine into eight.
Okay.
I wasn't sure.
Okay.
If it was mine, I never knew it was mine.
Okay.
But the, the data suggests that those couple a hundred people came out of nine.
Okay.
And into eight.
And so that may turn out to be one of those technical changes we need to iron out in the final part of it?
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean that we agree.
Because if I lost it, it doesn't really take me out of compliance.
Right.
And if I had to keep it, it, it won't be the end of the world.
It doesn't change our understanding of an existing guideline, and that, in the balance. And so I would suggest, for now, as you pointed out, it's a draft, and I think we should move forward to the next stage, but to do that, with full recognition, taking careful notes to track things that are ongoing. But, you know, I'm concerned about meeting our obligations. One of the things I was, you know, really committed to doing, which is why I was able, willing to come back twice in person to do all of this work, is to get things done so that we could file this week. And I think to do that confidently, the document that we have is, is pretty good at approximating what captures your preferences, and it certainly captures the commitment to the guidelines. That would be my best recommendation.
All right, thank you. So Council Woods, does that answer, I know you had made?
Yeah, I was just suggesting, like I said, if there were councilors still actively discussing something, I just want to throw that out there, but I don't know who is or who isn't, but just want to make that suggestion if needed.
All right, thank you. Yes, Ms. Clark?
For the sake of the things that are still pending agreement and resolution, is the prospect for making changes during the comment period, is that real?
I mean, is that real?
If there's mutual consent among councilors.
Yes, that would be.
And then considering comments from the public.
They're all part of the process.
Because I heard Attorney Bernard say, the map that we put out in draft needs to be substantially in the form of what will be adopted, and I don't know what that means.
Okay.
I mean, because substantially, what's substantially?
Dr. Creighton.
So I'll be brief about it, to say, and offer a suggestion. I think substantially is, in some ways, right, more than half, largely pretty close, to what the final looks like, and I think that, you know, I haven't heard, like, fundamental, this doesn't capture what we've committed to so far, that is, we, the council, not me, you. What I would suggest to kind of guide what we're gonna maybe do with talking about the public comment, is in some ways, invite comment on particular elements that may be continuing discussions. So, you know, one of the things that sometimes happens in my prior projects is, you know, the decision-maker offers some open questions that, you know, may inform or confirm things that are in the map, and you can then maybe get more focused feedback on that or other stuff. But of course, at the same time, as you point out, you know, the decision-makers can continue conversations, but that at the end of it, you have both your internal and external data that can be useful in reaching some final decision. But if the standard is substantial, I think you will have met it. I haven't heard anything that fundamentally changes the sort of underlying rubric of the map as it's presented. And again, I think my view is that it is consistent with your guidelines. I can tell you, my judgment is that it's consistent with law. So that would be my suggestion, in the effort of moving the process along, so that you get more information to make a final judgment down the line.
Thank you for that synopsis of really how we could move forward, and I guess I'm just saying again, we have, we need a document that we work from, and so this document that in this form gives us that opportunity to get that additional dialogue from the councilors, as well as get that public input. And so we will still have the consultants that will be working on that, and so then we can get this information to move forward. Mrs. Abbott, I think you had a question or comment?
Well, I did. The discussion that Dr. O'Quinn and I have had about that thing we keep calling the boot, which of course doesn't look like a boot, it looks like a dangling participle. And then we have the area that I might trade to get that dangling participle out of this thing, and, and that would be the portion of Forest Park South Avondale, the South Avondale portion of it. So how long will it take to calculate that? Is that a, is that a? I mean, we have slow internet here at City Hall? Anyway, it just seems to me that the map should be as accurate as possible before we vote on it. Do we vote on it tomorrow?
We can, but what we want to move forward with is bring it out of committee, and then we could move it, we'll bring it to council, full council tomorrow, given the timeframe that we can make those changes or make these tweaks.
So, Madam President, is it realistic?
So, Ms. Bernard, go ahead. Ms. Bernard, I'm gonna ask you to come back up, just one second. I want to be sure we're clear, the date with the 22nd, what was the item that you were, the reference you were making to that?
The, would be setting the, the resolution to set the public hearing.
Okay.
On, on the matter. The, under the ordinance, the council cannot approve the ordinance and the map until the public hearing is held, and there are others, that specific time that it has to be advertised.
So again, we're not approving the map, we're moving forward with the draft.
Right.
And so that we can file it with the clerk.
Correct.
That is the next step.
Yeah, I will state, I always ask, you know, a question early on of what happens, you know, in discussions with the consulting team and everybody, as far, you know, with council staff, as far as what happens if the map changes at the public hearing, or, you know, or after the public hearing when the council votes, you know, if there's changes to the map. There are some similarities, yet there are some differences, as to the way there are zoning. As you know, you know, it's come down in, you know, the legal perspectives about zoning, about having to re-advertise a zoning ordinance, because it was published in full, and it has to be published in full. I think if it's, you know, some minor changes that have to happen, that are maybe just technical and non-substantive, but if you go back and want to make substantive changes after the public has been heard, you may want to consider having another hearing at that point, just to be safe, to go back through, letting the public know the original map has changed, and here's the, you know, the final map that the council's gonna consider. Be safe.
Thank you. Dr. Creighton, did you have any comments to follow up with what Ms. Bernard has just suggested to us?
You know, that's consistent, certainly with my understanding, and I think generally speaking, it's, you know, good practice, but certainly, again, the process leaves open the opportunity to take additional information. And, you know, to be clear, if it's a technical change, and it, for example, doesn't involve people, that might be treated differently than one that does. But I think, you know, my recommendation, again, I'll just reiterate, is, given the work that was done, given the opportunity for everyone to have these discussions and give input, I think it's reasonable to move forward with the draft that you currently have, leaving open the opportunity to do more work afterwards. But I think for, you know, the last 10 years, I think there was some work that needed to be done to correct some issues that might have come up last time, and I want to avoid that. So when we go forward, I want to go forward knowing what we've done, and it's been thoroughly reviewed. If we want to further change it, we can do it, but anytime we go forward, I would really feel most confident when there's material that's in that everybody understands, based on the input that we've gotten in the process so far that we laid out.
Well, I still have a question. What is the deadline for redrawing the final map? So you're saying that if some councilors still have some conversations to work out, when is the deadline for that final map that you can change?
So, to reiterate, you know, what was said earlier by Ms. Bernard, today we need to file a draft to comply with the ordinance. What happens after that is largely, you know, your choice, but I think if there's going to be public comment, you would want to have before them, and before you vote, the item that you want to be the map. So there's room, perhaps, to make changes after this is filed. But I think, as far as I understand, and this actually gets into this complicated matter that I think Councilor O'Quinn asked about, you want to leave yourself with as much certainty as possible about what happens after the map is adopted, after a map is adopted, because there is a six-month waiting period before you can hold an election pursuant to that map. And so you want to make sure that you're not creating more confusion for any vacancy that may or may not occur in that six-month window, and we've laid out the calendar with March 29th being a reasonable point at which you limit the uncertainty. So I would say, sorry for the long explanation, but I wanted to show my work to say, March 29th is a reasonable endpoint, so some things should probably be decided then or very close to then. So much of the work, I think, shouldn't happen prior to that time.
All right, thank you. Does that answer your question? Council Williams, did you have a question? We still have a... We still have a, um, on the table.
Okay. I, I just got kind of confused with everything, so if, if Daryl gets his, if we publish this map or whatever, we set the hearing, whatever the motion, that's not going to limit Daryl's ability to make the changes he wants.
Correct.
I guess is not a question.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's correct.
I just want to make sure that, that we're not.
No, we're not.
Amstringing anyone.
So, I asked the question, would the deadline for the final map be since March 29th?
So, we have that time.
Yeah.
Up until that time. Counselor Woods?
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Madam President. Did just want to reiterate, like I said, we are, uh, having a public hearing and inviting public input, and, uh, definitely respect that public input, and there, there may be some changes as a result of that public input. So, I just want to make sure the public is clear, um, you know, definitely review the map, and, uh, you will have opportunity to, to give input, and that will become a part of the process. And so, I didn't want that part to get lost in, in kind of some of that conversation.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification, because we'll, we will talk about, once we file this particular version with the clerk, or if we get that consensus, then how we will be sure that that information is made public. We want to get the public comments. I also want counselors to continue to have dialogue, especially in those areas where there needs to be, you know, more discussion that there. All right, I'm going to head.
Yes. But, and I'm not sure, you know, if we'll be around 10 years from now, this has to show the importance of us getting the census out, because we are basically getting punished for, I mean, I know it's a pandemic, but we're getting punished for this. Like, I think the numbers would have been way different if we had gotten everybody on it. So, I do want to make that clear, that a lot of, and myself included, even though I tried my best, like our, I don't know what happened, but because we weren't that diligent, we're trying to get the census data, we were very below, this is the results of it. So, I just want everybody to really just understand that, because I'm sure in a lot of our districts, there are a lot more people in there than what this map is saying, well, than what this data is saying, so.
And you make a very good point, Counselor, and I believe it's something we're all having to live with this, um, as you said, the pandemic, uh, just, uh, the next 10 years, we are seeing today the importance of people reporting to the census and how it can impact us in our individual districts and as a city. We've lost people as a result of what I think are uncounted people, and it even talk, that is affected whether we're number one, two, three in population within the state, or we're the largest city. So, we see all sorts of ramifications of, um, how this particular census has really impacted us and, um, how we will be able to, uh, work within those guidelines of the numbers of people we have in our districts over this period of time. I would like to go ahead and call for the vote, and that is that we will be moving forward with this particular version of the draft of the map, keeping in mind that we will have that available for public comment, and we'll also be looking for counselors to continue this discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
All right. We note one opposed, one no vote. But it's actually a committee vote, but we'll go ahead and we'll note that. But we have approval from the.
No, I spoke, I said aye.
He said aye. All right, so that motion passes. Thank you. Uh, the next item, I believe Ms. Bernard and Dr. Creighton, you've already talked about the redistricting ordinance and, um, what, how we proceed with our public hearing resolution. Any other additional information you feel we need? I want to be sure the public knows that, how the next direction we're moving in.
Uh, Madam President, I would, again, recommend, and I think there's been discussion about it, but to be explicit, because I think it's, it is important for the public to get a sense of what to expect, um, I would recommend that, um, as, as been discussed, there'd be a, um, website that, uh, lays out what we, the work that's been done so far, the background materials, all the, uh, basic materials that the council has seen so far, charts, census blocks, et cetera, obviously the, uh, ordinance information required by law. Also, as I just suggested, maybe a, first, a summary of the districts as proposed, at least in this draft, and then a list of questions, focus questions that might invite specific comment for people who are interested. And that that input come both in the form of written comment that would involve some porto on the, uh, digital, uh, landing page, and then, of course, the in-person feedback that you all would receive during the public hearing. That's pretty consistent with what, um, most jurisdictions that do redistricting requires, some do even less, but that, I think, hits about at the right mark. Uh, but given the time allotted and the amount of work that you all have already done, I think that kind of information, in addition to what you commonly do for, uh, notice, publishing in, uh, publications and putting in libraries, et cetera, I think pretty closely approximate what, approximates what would be necessary to deal with, uh, decent amount of public engagement, uh, at, at least, uh, you know, for the time allotted that, uh, you have, uh, in order to make a final decision on the maps.
Thank you very much. Uh, I know our plan as a committee is that, just as Dr. Creighton has outlined, we'll be launching a site for the redistricting information that he has shared with us that we feel we should put on that site. We'll also include an email address that will allow comment and comments back to the committee and to the council as we go, move forward to consider the map. And then, of course, we'll be looking for the same communication that is taking place among the counselors, so that when we get ready to have that final version, we will have those comments, and we'll also have the work that has been done by the council. And it will include those summaries as, um, Dr. Creighton had requested, and I'm most encouraged by the fact that we'll be able to get that feedback through written comments from the public. Uh, we look for that information to come out within a few days. We'll be sure to advertise that to our residents so they will know where to go on the website, how to look for those documents, and when they'll be available. We also have plans to have a paper version or a large map where, uh, people who don't have the opportunity for internet access, we can make those maps available. If you're like me, I learn, uh, also, I, I need to touch things and look at things, and so, we will have, let you know where those maps will also reside, so we can get that input. Any questions from the committee as we move forward? All right, um, we don't have any old business, can I have someone to make a motion for adjourn?
No move.
Bernard has her hand up.
Someone has their hand up?
Julie Bernard.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Bernard, didn't see you.
Thank you. I would encourage you, if you're going to have a website, you're going to have public comments, and you're going to put maps at other locations, that we include all of that in the resolution.
In the ordinance.
And the notice that, that is, um, published by the city clerk, which is another reason why not trying to put it on as an addendum tomorrow is the best idea. It needs to be pushed back so that we can have all the information to publish in the notice.
Okay. Any questions on this end? I thought I saw someone. All right. Thank you, Ms. Bernard, and we'll take that into consideration as we move forward. Mr. Moore?
I was about to do the motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? I believe you did. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, meeting adjourned.